We're good.
Okay, welcome everybody to town board work session of Tuesday, March twentieth two thousand eighteen. And um we start off with our first thing on our agenda, which is the Hudson East River Estuary Grant Program submission for Upper Nikko Dam.
So as the board will remember, our Upper Nikko Dam study um with Titanic that uh basically left us with the question, will removal of the dam perhaps impact surrounding property owners?
That'll be cool.
Um which was, you know, not for nothing, but probably the question that
Reasonable question.
Yeah, so um we are applying for a grant so that we can actually do that study and find out because frankly
Yes.
the answer will dictate exactly how we move forward, whether or not we remove or rebuild.
It's a bill.
So um just wanted to keep the board apprised.
Alright, so I read the Nikko Dam, all of Nikko Dam stuff. I think that on the removal
Mm-hmm.
um they underestimated the amount of I'm sorry, I'm I'm
Impact.
No, not impact. They had fifty thousand bucks in for plants and grading. And that is
removal.
Yeah, and I and I have to tell you that I had actually asked them for drawings of what that would actually look like. There's gonna have to be walkways and everything else, but we never get there if we can't answer that there's no
No, no, I understand, but I just wanna tell you, uh when we look at the numbers that are presented in that report, I think it's underestimating.
Look very lovely.
I think I think you're right, be- because pardon, maybe that is the actual just removal of the dam,
Correct, of the
but it is not the impact to the area and the improvements that would have to be made. And actually
Right. Cause otherwise it'll become an invasive species, you know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I have to tell you that I'm I'm aggravated only because when
It's wrong.
because we didn't get the full report initially, one of the things I asked them for was to go one step for one step further
Mm.
and to show the board what they would imagine the surrounding area would be and what kind of improvements would it be required?
That's a great suggestion.
Because there was no way we were just gonna leave it just like that. Something had to be done to it. So that fifty thousand dollars was a
A a holding place.
holding place, yeah. It was ne- that was never really the
Okay, I just wanted to raise that.
Mm.
Yeah, absolutely. And
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out with regard to this grant
Mm-hmm.
that um just wanted to make sure that you're applying for the right one.
Okay.
Uh because there were three different sort of buckets of money with different deadlines attached to them.
Mm-hmm.
And the largest one is the April eighteenth at three P M. There's also one that was March thirtieth at twelve noon. Um she was like the, yeah, I think that's the So I just
So she's targeting the April thirteenth one.
The April eighteenth, yeah.
Eighteenth.
Right, but yeah eighteenth, but she's targeting the thirteenth as the
Just wanted to flag that for you. That um that's a very free grant. It's um the next
No, no, I I know, I just wanted to write a note to her.
Right here. Yeah, so this is the one that she's going for, one million.
Right.
The traditional estimate, yeah, two million, yeah.
Okay, so we're done with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Next, we got the gun prevention legislation. So we have a letter that we've been circulating that we're gonna be sending to Senator Murphy. And um
Is that you?
That was on me. I was thinking she had
There's copies here, do you wanna
But um
And it's been edited since then, so that's actually now
Yeah, yeah, so just
Don't don't, yeah, don't distribute that though.
Okay.
To disclose it's not final, it's a draft.
Cause it's
It's still it's it's
Yeah.
Well, it's not confidential, but it's just not a final
I'll really be happy if he gets it.
Right.
But um the bottom line is, I mean, the substance is really not changing, actually. The legislation that's in there that we're referencing is not changing, the positions we want to support is not changing. The only thing that's changing is is um
Grabber, length, some other stuff.
it's it's just 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 basically to emphasize our our point and our passion for it. It's that's the only thing that's really changing.
Ends of
Mm-hmm.
Um how important it is for us. But the sub- sub- and substance of the the legislation that's out there is not changing.
Mm-hmm.
Um and we are going to, we talked about also including a list of mass shootings. Um which would do as like an addendum to the letter.
Right, moving the letter.
Yeah. Or
So um
She wanted to put in the letter.
Or yeah, to the letter, just
I would get that.
It doesn't matter.
How would you navigate it? The problem may be in terms of adding to the physical letter if you're gonna pull
Yes, just to pull it.
If you're gonna
They're not gonna look at an addendum.
It could be an exhibit, whatever, it doesn't matter, but it's
We just gotta figure it out.
You can reference it in the same way that you would in any other kind of business document, which is the number of children killed in mass shootings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, please see reference, this is this number, you know, this is like a harf- you know, thing and
Yeah, we can do that. Right.
We could also do it
Put it in, you know, cause I think the point is really the frequency and
But it's larger than just children.
Right.
Right, but I'm just saying
So we
There's suicide, there's domestic violence, there's cities.
Yes.
Whatever, I think we should
Right.
Because and then you can do as backup because I mean the specific incidents are loaded
The reality is
Certain ones, but the but I mean the point is is like this is not going away.
The reality is you can addendum usurp the letter.
It's not going away.
Right.
Because there's so many instances of
Well, it could
Right, I know, unfortunately.
It could be a chart, it could be a chart also. If the chart, I haven't seen a chart, but if Detroit's show was a steep rise, which I would imagine it does, then I think the chart could be just as powerful, just the visual.
And we can figure that out, how we wanna do it.
Do you know like So I sent that link around earlier today. I can't remember what the name of the site was that I found.
Chart, that shows you Mass shootings down orgus into like
Something, it was, yeah, it was some sort of database um of all of the mass shootings.
On a gun Yeah, yeah. So we can decide, but
So we want that in there? I mean, it's a shocking amount of information.
We gotta figure out how we manage to incorporate it. And if we're putting this online too, we just add the link, if this goes online.
Right.
Great.
Just add the link so we can click it.
Great. Yep.
Um for your uh
Definitely.
When you sent out your missive this week on on what you've discussed and how you talk about it, mention the mom march this Saturday.
Right.
Uh there's two
Actually not
two locations in Westchester. There's Austin, they've got a march. They've also got a march in White Plains and of course the one in New York City.
Yeah. Awesome.
Uh but I know that a lot of the moms in town are going down there.
Yeah, the city.
And they've already bought their T-shirts and whatever, so I guess since it goes hand in hand with this, that's why
Well Somebody doesn't, is not gonna, I'm not gonna have a supervise report this week. I already have it when I have, we have a town board meeting. If somebody wants to submit something about Moms March, then we just put it in there as an article.
I would just note too, it's actually not a Moms March.
Moms Demand Action, there's
Mm-hmm. Um it's, well, that's one of the groups that's involved, but this is really a march that's organized by youth Yeah. um in our community and throughout the country. So this is really, this is a youth-led movement. I was gonna say, isn't this
So it's just like a graphic and some
There's a big march in Chappell that would present
And um Temple Bethel is organizing um folks to go to D C as well as to take the train into the city. There, you know, there's a certain train and I don't know off the top of my head, but they're all taking it to the city. Um as well as a group to go to White Plains, which is where I'm going. And I think that's like the twelve and six train on Saturday.
But it comes out on Friday, which may be too late, but I could reach out to Temple and see if they wanna put something in the newsletter, but
Excellent.
But um so but then we have some, Ivy did some great research about some local legislation that we could consider as a town board. And we don't need to necessarily talk about every single one of them right now, but we could try to like maybe pinpoint one or two.
Do we have to make this discussion and kind of decide that the state and county legislation?
Some of it
That was for safe, that was for storage, but there's a whole bunch of other legislation that we can talk about.
Some of it Right.
I'm sorry, so for the for the line edits, is is someone gonna forward them to us? Or are you keeping track of them?
Yeah.
Uh these edits to the letter?
Yep.
Yeah, so I've already started editing it, but we'll circulate it again.
Okay, alright.
And then we
So are you gonna make those?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make the edits.
Okay.
So I mean, there's a lot of different local legislation, but yeah, we we did think that maybe the uh gun storage we were gonna hold off on.
Mm-hmm.
Um but there's other stuff that's here that we could talk about.
Right.
Um Regulation of gun shops, I mean, that's uh we're really concerned that there's gonna be a gun shop open, it could. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to mark it.
But let's grow
Yeah, I mean, so you know, I mean, just to just to sort of rewind on this, I mean, this was
Use the scientific
research I did, you know, the day after the Parkland shooting, when sort of what was foremost on our minds was kind of as local legislators,
Exactly.
um what role could we play um in terms of, you know, what could we do to pass local legislation? And the first thing that we
Right.
Mm-hmm.
looked at was the safe storage law, which um Jeremy had pointed us in the direction of um the the conversations that were happening um up in, I think it was
Portchester? No, it was the whatever maybe, the municipality.
Um and and Beacon the the year before. Um and then we subsequently determined that that was um sort of redundant when we looked at the Westchester County ordinance. Um but but really the thought here was, you know, if if we were and, you know, sort of in the passion of the moment, if we were to really sort of take ourselves and try to come up with the safest, you know, we were the safest small city in the country and had, you know, the strictest gun violence protection laws on the books. Understanding that we as New Yorkers are fortunate to live in a state that has the the safe act and has so many uh protections for us at the state level already, we were to build on that, how could we do that? And so the the ideas that like sort of quickly assembled there, um were really kind of with that in mind. Um and you know, I think that there's some ideas there that have merit. I think there's some that are probably a bit of a reach for us, um you know, looking at things that New York City was able to pass may not be relevant when we think about the town of Newcastle. We may not be able to prove the sort of history of violence that they were able to prove in New York City that allowed these things to pass.
Right, same, right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I think we also have to be mindful of the fact that um New York City and even Yonkers has the budget to um to defend themselves against lawsuits um when these laws get challenged, which they potentially would. So I think there's a lot of sort of considerations there, um but at the same time, you know, I I wanted to sort of put out there what's the universe of things that we could consider. Um and I'm very interested to sort of hear what your you guys have kind of if you've begun to look at any of this and whether it's
Guns, look ahead, we, I'm sorry, we hadn't advanced it to reach any um
Yeah.
More more specifically, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, the extreme risk protection order, um the red flag law to allow local municipality to enact their own version of that type of a statute. If we can look into that, because that would be something would be interesting, or even if it's something we can advocate on the county level, but doesn't happen on the state level, which we can talk with our representative on the county level, but um it'd be interesting if that could happen. Uh and also I think that would be important is while we may not have that many local people convicted of crimes of domestic violence and in terms of misdemeanors in our municipality, I don't, I wrote a little list, but um taking firearms out of their hands. So I we can all probably pick and choose what we think is most relevant, most valuable. And I'm assuming that most of us would agree though, that the extreme risk protection order would be towards the top.
And if I don't, if I remember correctly, the chief actually we own that, he wasn't supporting us well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was.
Right, but that's a good, that's a, I I like that also because uh if we're if we're encouraging our state representatives to to pass legislation, and if we can pass the same legislation here, that we're speaking, you know, actions speak louder than words.
And 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 for anyone who's listening and they haven't read on it, um the standard is, if my recollection serves me right, is probable cause. So it's not just on a whim, for lack of a better term, preponderance of the evidence to seize someone's firearm and 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 infringe on their second amendment right. There still needs to be probable cause, and then it's a few days and there would be a hearing to address it, so it's not stripping someone of that right, it's just temporarily restricting their access.
But I love the idea, even just going not quite as important, but regulating gun shops, we we don't want vape shops in town. I would argue that we certainly don't want a gun shot opening up
Can we piggy, can we piggy that back, can we just piggy piggyback that on to
Yeah, why don't we just put it in the same
Oh, similar similar um
Similar language.
Same guy.
I mean, I think a lot of these have really great, and I I don't know if we could pass even the no discharge within town limits with certain exceptions, obviously for campfire club, things like that. I I really like those and I think we should go as far as we can.
My view is, I also is, well, I think I we should go as far as we can. I think we should do things that I wanna use it from hesitantly, like say that wouldn't have value, but really, really have the most value.
Impact.
So most impact, thank you. So, you know, having a red flag type of law, that would, if if we could, that would have real discernible, you know, measure of value. A no discharge while certainly significant.
It's after the fact, it's gonna, right, I know.
Right, it was going to commit a violent offense is not, oh, it's a violation in Newcastle.
Right, I know.
They're gonna fine, so that's not, that's not as consequential, not to belittle it, but just it's not, doesn't have any value.
I know, I know what you mean.
So I think we're gonna concentrate on items and that have real genuine value as opposed to more symbolic.
These have more, that has more value in my mind as for something that may be a little more accidental. Where somebody's deciding they're going using, you know, their backyard for shooting practice and end up hitting somebody. To me, that's more incidental. Somebody who wants to commit a crime is not gonna care.
And then the thing that's
It's violating that provision, obviously they are.
The thing I think was, yeah.
We don't have, we don't allow that to happen in the state of town.
No, so you you're right, actually. So even hunting, um we're bow and arrow.
Yeah. Bow and arrow town.
Yeah. And we're unable to actually restrict that. That's not within our
The bow and arrow?
Yeah.
And I wish in that particular case, we could use a shotgun, as you know.
You're you're not able to Time out, time out. Can you just explain that very briefly? When we're saying we're not able to restrict it, there's certain areas where one can release and shoot? Or can I go into my little neighborhood and say, alright, I'm gonna shoot my arrow at the tree and by accidentally
Um no
Uh
Yeah, no. No, we actually, you 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 can't. I have, I've researched this and I will
Is it a bridge, is there any
Uh the D E C um has regulations. They are the exclusive um regulator
They preempted that area?
of that. Um so Pleasantville was able to prohibit bow and arrow um discharge, for lack of a better term, within their town because you're allowed, you're allowed to restrict the discharge within X number of feet of a residence and because their town is so congested
Ah, so it's residential.
or more, you know, more densely populated than ours is, that there's no place within the town limits.
Right.
So there is a restriction within discharge of, you know, a neighbor's house, but there are in fact
Right.
rather large properties where people have ponds and they bring in hunters with bow and arrows that control the cannon and goose population, for example. And neighbors are a little upset about that, or at least had been at one point in time.
I am not, I am not in favor of changing this current law.
Okay, I'm just saying that that's when it came up, so
I I would prefer sharpshooters coming in, but
Just, you know, some are more skilled than others. Let me just put it to you that way. That's what
Back back to the the issue here.
Yes, yes, okay.
Right, okay.
So I think there's some that we can certainly enact fairly easily and some that have greater value than others, and that's what should come out.
I'm so so worried about that, but yeah. Right.
Yeah, but
Which the, which one you, what, should we pick one right now and just try to move it forward?
So, yeah. So the extreme orders of protection
Yeah, should we get one in?
Well, if that's just part of the resolution, if that's just a resolution, we're talking about some local legislation.
I think, so my sense, I actually reached out to the folks at Moms Demand Action about that.
Hmm.
And their sense was that that would be very hard to enact locally. Um and I can follow up with them with more information about that.
And this event, is it some illegal counsel you spoke to or just a an advocate?
No, no, it's just
Or just a mom?
Um no, not a mom, actually not a mom, um but but an a a dad, uh who who's a part of that organization. Um and they 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 said they're working primarily with states on that. Um but that it might be something that we could look at on the county level, but that it would be very hard to enact locally um in terms of the seizure of the of the
We'd have to replace the store, there's, I mean, there's just big practical, but it's something worth looking into.
Yeah.
Because I I do think if we could lead by example on something like that, I think that is real value. And I don't, and and even if it doesn't pass this legislative legislative term, it's it's not if but when.
So let's, we can look into that. And as far as regulation of gun shops, we just piggyback to vape shops, it's easy.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, that's right, that's just a local law.
Right.
Both are local laws, but the gun shop one is easier to influence. And the extreme risk, we'll take we'll take a look at.
Right.
Okay.
And maybe
Okay.
I will continue to work on the letter to Murphy and then Lisa, you were trying to, the date that was initially picked, April twentieth,
is a Friday.
which is only attentive date, it's a Friday. They're only in session on Monday, Tuesdays, sometimes Wednesdays. But we have the legislative senate uh s uh schedule now.
So we're trying to find a day where it works with the schools and how we can
We're losing all our spring break with snow, so
Well
Well, they're not there spring break anyway, but um you know, I, we don't want it to just be a, you know, a photo op where they're going up there and taking a picture and coming home. We want them to be able to really meet with legislators. Um so we obviously want them to be going up on a day when they're in session and can, we can make appointments and they meet with them. So we're trying to find a day with the schools, you know. As important as it is, not all the kids wanna, who are very involved in this, wanna miss a full day of school, so we're trying to see if we can
And but it's
either if we can work with the schools and make it a feel, an educational trip or if um Christine can try to work around the days, so there's a half day that's coming on a Monday or Wednesday or Tuesday instead of a Friday. So we're we're just working on it now.
But you know, listen, even if it's a, if it's a field trip, I mean, they take field trips and going up to Albany on this legislation, that'd be a pretty good field trip.
Yeah.
You know. That that'd be, uh you know.
Yep, so we're trying to work the best way to do it.
And so we're looking, you're looking, you're looking towards the end of vape, right?
Me?
There it is.
Yes, the end vape, but because they, because the students really wanna get together and read all the legislation and make sure that they're very prepared
Yeah. Yes.
when they go up and they get a little bit of time.
Yes.
And we
Well, and 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 like, you know, the, so the budget will do April fourth or second, right?
And break in, we can
And the um Are we gonna have a a town hall in this prior to that or after that?
And if it's not on time, which is
Or like a meeting in a town?
Probably isn't, yes.
A town hall for the
Um you know, and then that will push back there.
Cause I think it would be valuable to get a town hall.
And they all, after it passes, they all leave town, so
Yeah, we can get it, yeah, we can get it.
Yeah.
Lisa, maybe we can, if, once we have an idea of the date, it'd be great if we could have the town hall before, if we were gonna still consider doing that.
Yeah, we can do that.
So that they can have a, I don't wanna use the term dry one, but they can at least discuss amongst themselves in a forum of the people, legislators.
Yeah. And I've met with the uh the student, the uh the faculty advisors for the student government and they're all gonna get together and practice and
Right.
they're, they're, I mean, it's a huge movement at the school.
Right.
But when you, when I, when I do lobbying with with the tribal association, I mean, before you lobby, you always have a training session. You go over your your talking points. And they actually will have, they have um role play, where you have somebody who is lobbying and you have somebody who's being very uh you know, non-cooperative and you, they they go over the talking points and how to deal with it. I think that'd be great for the students, not just to go to learn about the issues and go over the talking points, but also to understand how lobbying is done.
Right, the whole process.
And right, exactly, and now they can see the position.
I can play some to Murphy.
And um obviously, reality is, is that, you know, it'd be good to uh
Okay.
Moving on, moving on, but you could, moving on.
Mukar's
I feel like
All right, we we'd like to award that uh street light replacement bid.
It's a tall enough
Okay, by the way, we're moving moving ahead and uh so what we've got here is a what we have here is a recommendation of our town engineer to um
It's like a football.
uh to award contracts uh in each of these specifications for
The streetlights.
and uh yeah, for light concepts at uh Edna Electric, La Wesco, Best L E U Group. Um and the entire, the full contract
Mm-hmm.
big results are here, so you can see what it is and it had to do with the type of like what we were doing, whether it was and uh with our so we accepted the lowest responsible bidder, um except for the ones that were disqualified as non-compliant to our specifications.
Was there any consideration given to trying to consolidate these? Um because we have fifteen winners across the
Yeah, but but they're just
uh because sorry, no, we have five winners across the fifteen items. Um and there is a sort of managerial burden on the town
Yeah.
for having um that many sort of vendors to be working with. And I'm just curious whether there was any consideration given to potentially going back to one or two of these um and saying, you know, is there additional sort of savings that the town could realize?
We'd have to re, we'd have to re, we're not allowed
We have
We'd have to rebid it because it was bid as a line item and you have to select lowest bid for each line item. So you'd have to reject all the bids and then go out to rebid it with that specification.
We did We didn't do it as a packet. As a package.
Cause they expected from their discussions that not every vendor would be able to supply all the materials.
Every item.
You're not allowed to go back and negotiate at this point with the top two bidders?
It was a
This is for materials and we have the lowest.
This is materials, not not N R P.
Yeah.
If it was like uh um consulting services or
Yeah, I mean, it's just, so maybe next time, if this came up, it would be good to see a um a bid sheet that had, you know, this would be our cost to deliver all fifteen and this would be our cost per item, and then the ability to either select the package deal or to select for each
Right, so but but what would happen is When you lose out on somebody who had a very good price on one of or two of the items, but couldn't provide all of them.
Could could, but could have provided
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm saying you would either choose one option or you would choose the other, depending on which added up to
I was even thinking having him in Stump.
No, 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 we, one of the reasons why we're getting such a good rate is because we actually have an in-house
No, it's just
In-house seller.
And he's awesome.
Yes.
Our in-house
So, yeah.
One, yeah.
Joe, do we know if there's garbage pick up floor?
There is um so far. Started.
So far.
Someone Facebooking you on Twitter, buddy?
Got that. I'll send that an email to uh the crew, the Santa Pro uh
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, they start very early in the morning and
I I start, I think it starts knowing it's starting tonight. And that the heavy snow start, according to the thing I just looked at, six A M until Thursday morning.
The problem is they're gonna start, they're gonna stop.
Even it is.
No, no, it starts now and gets heavy at six A M.
They come to me, they come to me.
Okay, next slide, I'm sorry. Um did you talk to Bill, Maschil at all?
They try to come around
Building inspector.
But he's still on vacation.
I don't know about that personnel.
He's on vacation for the next six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yes.
It was part-time, he's not
Uh five, five weeks.
Yeah, I know, I know.
He's in most country. All right, so we're gonna be um authorization to post our position of
Yep.
Yes, we've already sent out here now, it's very
The air mass shooters and we are waiting for responses and moving ahead.
Speaking of building inspectors, um
Yes.
we need, and and speaking of snow, and speaking of power, we should look at our legislation, our statute in terms of
Generators.
of uh generators and
Yeah.
in-ground um propane tanks and because for a property, for example, like mine, in a small property, you your setbacks are probably making it impossible, other than to get approval from a higher authority. And we wanna encourage people to have generators that are properly installed as opposed to, you know, rigged on their own. So I think we should consider revisit revisiting that.
Doesn't mean us, just exactly that, man.
What?
What's, what's that?
Like us?
Who?
No, that we, you know, plug in, nevermind.
No, 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 I don't mean it that way. I mean, like, if you can't do it the right way, I don't, I don't think you need, you just need an electrician, you just need an electrician to approve on the plugins.
Right, right, it's a very one.
Yeah, my house is impossible to plug in a generator. Ben Rock.
But they have to staff it.
Oh, oh, Ben Rock, and
Well, well, it has to get a permit, I understand that, but I mean, I'm talking about the horrible, the horrible, the hardwired
Correct. Uh yeah, they have that
Propane tank and
The one, correct.
You can put, you know, way in the woods, because to install it
With a rich
You would need a permit for electrician.
It's the same.
Yeah, we're on this, we're talking
Right, okay.
To install it
I'm talking about the hard hardwires, we should revisit the our legislation, our law, to make it more accommodating for people to get hardware.
Okay.
And doing electrical work in the house.
That's right. Yeah.
All right, um
And Rich was saying less, lower setbacks uh for the portable ones.
I'm trying, right, right.
Right.
But um
For the portable
we have to make a decision about the, I know the art, but
This is very loud, the generators.
It it maybe is what it is, but if it's having no power.
Oh, we can't
More noise to be tempered.
No, but if those who get power, it's really annoying to have
Well
Oh, so sorry.
The the non-portable ones also get tested every week, so they're they're very loud.
Cause walking around his neighborhood like
So I don't know that you wanna
If it if it's twenty feet difference, I'm gonna make you up a number of ten feet or thirty feet, not
So if the library closes tomorrow
Yeah.
we're, they're not opening for us in the evening, so we can play it by ear, we can cancel the program, we can
Okay, so let's play it later.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So the library, well, I mean, it's gonna be canceled, but we could just wait till the
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, is we could try to reschedule it for
Yeah, we, or you will just
We should just, nobody's, it's gonna, we can't.
Yeah. Yeah, we should reschedule this.
That's what it's
Yeah, no, it's
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, the middle is so soon from the
They're not gonna be able to get there. I mean, the storm, the storm preparedness
How it's so
The storm.
Things still are.
Meaning it's canceled, but it's storm.
Just get your current prime there.
See how important it was to have this?
Unfortunately, we're not prepared for the weather, so therefore
Okay.
Okay, so
We still are prepared, this talk will be
Autorization to obtain bids, right?
Okay.
I think we have to.
Um yep, author, next is authorization to obtain bids for the water, um the water treatment plant for chemical bids.
Mm-hmm.
Next is authorization to enter an agreement with Northern Westchester Special Recreation Agency, is what you
Sweet, it's just on the on the chemical
Okay, because different companies to different, it is very unusual for the same company to have um a complete line of items.
Sorry.
It is very
Oh, yeah, no, that's not what I was gonna ask. Um I was gonna ask if we could bid it for more than one year?
Oh.
Does it look like from his cover letter that he feels that we, he has to rebid this every year? And so is it possible to do a contract that's a two-year contract or a three-year contract?
Yeah. Um I I would, I I think he feels that the prices are are too um volatile, like
Right.
It's literally possible, whoever, even if he has a reason why he don't want to
Yeah.
He he does sometimes extend contracts. We extend them.
Yeah, if we can get it for the same price in the same terms, he doesn't
But hopefully, that's only if the bid allows for it.
Uh is it included when they do that?
I don't see that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, I don't see that, that's a big document.
You should I don't know, the Austin, Austin zip code is still holding at ten to fifteen.
Oh, I bet that's true. Yeah. Okay, okay. Um
Very good extension, is it a big document or
Big extensions. Indox, okay, great. Um okay, we have a request to uh attend continuing education classes. Let's see which one this one is. Uh this is for um uh Josh, it's a one-day seminar.
Mm-hmm.
Um a hundred dollars for the members of the institute. Okay, um the next one is, so there's that one and then his seminar on appraising. What did I group? Yeah, special education, it's
Okay.
Just a
Okay. Um okay, Ivy, we are we are revising, we are revamping, see this?
I noticed, I noticed, I saw it, I saw it, I loved it.
Okay, go.
Um but but I also thought Kira should stay at the hotel where the conference is.
I think so too.
Yeah.
No, recommend
The other one's thirty miles away, but we're saving three dollars, our our taxpayers.
We did a lot of research.
We did a lot of research.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okey-dokey, alright, so that's appraising, alright, staff to attend it. Uh Empire State Law Enforcement Seminar, so police officers, which one are they going to?
Traffic Safety.
Traffic Safety, here we are, yeah.
Thank you.
Um okay, and it's, this one's below the G S A rate, because our cops are just
I noticed that, it was a dollar, it was a dollar below.
They were trying to be competitive.
It's like you're testing us.
Alright, yeah, they should too. And I have to tell you, I don't care how much money this one was, we were sending them the chainsaw safety, I'm sorry, yeah, right? Everybody should go.
It's awesome.
Well, that sounds fun.
Everybody should go.
No, right?
What not to do for chainsaw
And then we'll go over to a claimer and we'll go down the
We're not, chainsaw, let me
You touch it, so
We can make a movie, I don't know.
Okay, we've got our payment of claims.
Yeah.
Um and last but not least, do we need to do the resolution for the payment of claims tonight?
Wait, we need to do resolution for payment of claims, Joseph proposed it.
And also then we've got, okay, a couple of public hearings. Okay, so um Rob actually pointed out that our vape law, we missed the public hearing on it. So sorry, we have to reno So um Rob actually pointed out that our vape law, we missed the public hearing on it, so sorry, we have to renotice it and we will quickly put it through again, so we do apologize about that. The good news is, is that we have revamped the way we track our public hearings and now have a better system. So, not without a necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion to set a public hearing regarding a proposed local law amending chapter seven town code concerning with respect to the sustainability advisory board for Tuesday, April tenth, twenty eighteen at seven thirty in the assembly room of Newcastle Town Hall located at two hundred South Greeley Ave in Chapqua.
Second, who in favor?
I make a motion to set a public hearing regarding a proposed lo- legislation to raise the age to purchase tobacco products within Newcastle to the age of twenty-one for Tuesday, April tenth, twenty eighteen at seven thirty P M in the assembly room of Newcastle Town Hall located at two hundred South Greeley, Chapqua, New York.
Second.
Who in favor?
Hi, you have your claims.
I move uh to approve the payment of claims amount of three hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, two thousand seventeen expenditures totaling eleven thousand, five hundred forty, four dollars, ninety-five cents. And two thousand eighteen expenditures totaling three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars, five cents. Listened on the summary, pre-check writing report and detailed voucher details report, all dated March sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Who in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Let's get to a jury.
Second. Who in favor?
Hi.
Thanks.